Okay, welcome to the US 98 PDNE public hearing. If you do not hear audio at this time, please check your computer speaker settings. If you're experiencing technical difficulties, please contact technical support at jennifer.brownfield@attinsglobal.com. In the event of technical difficulties during the open house or the public hearing, please stay online while we work to resolve the issue. Hello, my name is Tori Y and I'm the project manager for the US 98 PDNE study and will be moderating this public hearing. On behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation, we would like to thank you for your interest in this study. I am being supported by representatives from FDOT District 3 and the consultant team and will be available for questions both in person and online. We are hosting this public hearing simultaneously in person at the Five Bridges Church in Panama City Beach, Florida, and virtually through GoToWebinar. I would also like to take a moment and thank any elected officials who are in attendance for tonight's public hearing. We appreciate your interest and involvement in this project. We will now turn our attention to the narrated public hearing presentation.
Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the US 98 Project Development and Environment, or PDNE Study, financial project identification number 437179-2-22-01. In addition to the PDNE staff here tonight, representatives from the district right-of-way department are here and will be available after the public hearing if you have questions regarding right-of-way acquisition for this project. A transcript is being made of all oral proceedings and will be part of the public record for this project. Before we begin the presentation, I will share a few details to help you participate in this public hearing through GoToWebinar. On your computer or device screen, you should see an information window that looks like the one shown on the right side. To listen to the public hearing, your computer or device speakers are selected by default. If you prefer to listen by phone, select Phone Call in the Control Panel and dial in using the information provided. All virtual attendees will be placed in Listen Only mode for the duration of the public hearing. At a later date, we will provide responses to written comments that were submitted during online registration and those who submitted comments at the in-person venue. The comment period begins as soon as the presentation has ended. Verbal comments from in-person attendees will be addressed first. Verbal comments from virtual attendees will be addressed second. Providing verbal comments using GoToWebinar is simple. First, you must request to speak when registering to attend. During the comment period, the organizer will call your name that you provided during registration and unmute you. When the microphone icon is green, you are ready to make your comment. If the microphone icon stays orange, you will need to click the microphone icon once and it will notify you that you are unmuted and then you can provide your comment. You will not be on camera at any time during the formal presentation or while providing public comment. In-person participants will be called upon to speak first, followed by the virtual online speakers who wish to speak. If you dialed into the public hearing by telephone, your phone was automatically placed in Listen Only mode and will remain in Listen Only mode throughout the public hearing. Those attending in person and virtually may make a public comment when called upon. A recording of the webinar will be available on the project website three days after the public hearing. You can also call or email the FDOT project manager after the public hearing to request additional information. All comments must be submitted or postmarked by Friday, May 19, 2023, to become part of the official record. Prior to the public hearing, draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review at the City of Panama City Beach City Hall since April 12, 2023 and will continue to be available at this location through May 19, 2023, Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The City of Panama City Beach City Hall is located at 17007 Panama City Beach Parkway in Panama City Beach, Florida. The draft engineering and environmental documents were also made available at the project website, and will continue to be available at the project website after this hearing. You may also view project documents tonight at the in-person public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvements, the conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential benefits and disadvantages pertaining to social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. This study satisfies the National Environmental Policy Act and other policies, regulations, and procedures. There are three primary components to tonight's public hearing. First, the open house, which occurred prior to this presentation, where you were invited to view the project displays, speak with the project team, and provide comments in writing or to the court reporter. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project's purpose and need, study alternatives, potential impacts, both beneficial and adverse, and proposed methods to mitigate adverse project impacts. And third, a formal comment period following this presentation, where you will have the opportunity to provide verbal statements or for those at the in-person location may provide comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. This environmental study has been conducted by FDOT District 3 in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws and pursuant to 23 U.S. Code 327 and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding between the FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration. Signed on May 26, 2022, the FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. This public hearing was advertised in the Panama City News Herald and the Florida Administrative Register and was noticed consistent with the federal and state requirements shown on the slide. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the FDOT District 3 office or the Tallahassee office. This contact information is displayed on the screen at the sign-in table at this public hearing and in the handout. FDOT is conducting a Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study for this project. The PDNE process is used to evaluate potential impacts to determine an alternative utilizing the continuous community outreach process to ensure all interested parties have meaningful participation in the process. Public input and information received at the public hearing will be taken into consideration when preparing the final documents for this study. The virtual project update was held on February 23, 2022. Following this public hearing, FDOT will finalize the study documents and conclude the study in fall of 2023. The design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction have not yet been funded. The study limits extend along US 98 from west of the Phillips Inlet Bridge to State Road 79, also known as South Arnold Road in Bay County, approximately 7.3 miles in length. US 98 is a critical east-west roadway and serves as a hurricane evacuation route. Within the study limits, a resurfacing project is currently under construction from Walton County Line to Heather Drive. Minor improvements to enhance the corridor include construction of a 10-foot multi-use path and 6-foot sidewalk, along with intersection improvements. The improvements being implemented as part of the resurfacing project were considered existing conditions for the PDNE study. The resurfacing project, financial project identification number 437759-1, is anticipated to be completed in spring of 2024. The purpose of this study is to address future vehicular capacity deficiencies on US 98 from west of the Phillips Inlet Bridge to State Road 79. The project is needed based on findings that portions of the study corridor would operate at deficient level of service by future year 2040 if no capacity improvements are constructed. The project has been identified in the Bay County Transportation Planning Organization, 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan Needs Plan, and Cost Feasible Plan. To satisfy the purpose and need identified for the project, the preferred alternative includes the following primary changes: Capacity improvements, which include widening to six lanes from Grand Point Boulevard to Heather Drive, which includes both multimodal improvements and access management modifications; and intersection improvements, which include reconfigured turning movements at the Front Beach Road, Griffin Boulevard, and State Road 79 intersections; and a new signal at the Sandal Lane Governor Drive intersection. We will now discuss each of these primary changes included in the preferred alternative. The existing US 98 from Grand Point Boulevard to west of the Phillips Inlet Bridge consists of a four-lane divided roadway with a 40-foot grass median, including 4-foot paved inside shoulders, 2 12-foot travel lanes per direction, 5-foot paved outside shoulders, and a 6-foot sidewalk along the south side of the roadway. The preferred alternative proposes widening to a six-lane divided roadway from Grand Point Boulevard to the west of the Phillips Inlet Bridge, including a 17-foot raised grass median, 6.5-foot paved inside shoulders, 3 12-foot travel lanes per direction, and 5-foot paved outside shoulders. The preferred alternative would construct a new 6-foot sidewalk along the north side of the roadway and a 10-foot shared-use path along the south side of the roadway. The sidewalk would be separated from the roadway by a 10-foot grass strip with guardrail and the shared-use path would be separated from the roadway by a drainage swell that varies in width between 19 and 39 feet. The existing US 98 Phillips Inlet Bridge includes two bridge structures with a separation of 21 feet. The eastbound bridge consists of two 11-foot travel lanes with a 4-foot inside shoulder, 6-foot outside shoulder, and a 6-foot 8-inch wide sidewalk, separated from the roadway by a concrete barrier. The westbound bridge consists of two 12-foot travel lanes with 10-foot inside and outside shoulders. The preferred alternative includes two new bridge structures for the US 98 Phillips Inlet Bridge. The eastbound bridge would include three 12-foot travel lanes, 10-foot inside and outside shoulders, and a 14-foot shared-use path separated from the roadway by a concrete barrier. The westbound bridge would include three 12-foot travel lanes, 10-foot inside and outside shoulders, and a 6-foot sidewalk separated from the roadway by a concrete barrier. The two bridge structures would be separated by 20 feet. The existing US 98 from east of the Phillips Inlet Bridge to Front Beach Road, east of Carolyn Avenue, consists of a four-lane divided roadway with a 40-foot grass median, including 4-foot inside shoulders, 2 12-foot travel lanes in each direction, 5-foot outside shoulders, and a 6-foot sidewalk along the south side of the roadway. The preferred alternative from east of the Phillips Inlet Bridge to Carolyn Avenue widens to a six-lane divided roadway with a 17-foot raised grass median, 6.5-foot paved inside shoulders, 3 12-foot travel lanes per direction, and 8-foot paved outside shoulders and shoulder gutters. The preferred alternative would include a new 6-foot sidewalk along the north side of the roadway and a 10-foot shared-use path along the south side of the roadway. The sidewalk and shared-use path would be separated from the roadway by 8.5-feet grass buffer with guardrail. The existing US 98 from Carolyn Avenue to Summer Breeze Road consists of a four-lane divided roadway with a 40-foot grass median, including 4-foot paved inside shoulders, 2 12-foot wide travel lanes per direction, 5-foot paved outside shoulders, a 6-foot sidewalk along the north side of the roadway, and a 10-foot shared-use path along the south side of the roadway. From Carolyn Avenue to Front Beach Road, there is a 6-foot sidewalk along the south side of the roadway and no pedestrian facilities along the north side of the roadway. From Summer Breeze Road to Manistee Drive, the existing roadway consists of a four-lane divided roadway with a 40-foot grass median, including 4-foot paved inside shoulders, 2 12-foot wide travel lanes per direction, 5-foot paved outside shoulders, and a 6-foot sidewalk along the north and south of the roadway. The preferred alternative from Carolyn Avenue to Manistee Drive proposes a six-lane divided roadway with a 17-foot raised grass median, 6.5-foot paved inside shoulders, 3 12-foot wide travel lanes in each direction, and 5-foot paved outside shoulders. The preferred alternative continues to provide a 6-foot sidewalk along the north side of the roadway and provides a consistent 10-foot shared-use path along the south side of the roadway. The sidewalk and shared-use path would be separated from the roadway by a drainage swell varying in width between 5 and 34 feet. The existing US 98 from Manistee Drive to Heather Drive transitions to a five-lane divided roadway with three eastbound lanes and two westbound lanes. The typical section along this segment includes 11- to 12-foot wide travel lanes, a raised median varying in width between 30 and 31 feet, a 4-foot bike lane, curb and gutter, a 6-foot sidewalk along the south side of the roadway, and a sidewalk varying in width between 5 and 6 feet along the north side of the roadway. Sidewalks on both sides of the roadway are separated by a 3- to 4-foot grass strip. From Heather Drive to State Road 79, the existing US 98 transitions to a six-lane divided roadway with raised median varying in width between 30 and 32 feet, 11.5-foot wide travel lanes in each direction, 4-foot bicycle lanes, curb and gutter, a 6-foot sidewalk along the south side of the roadway, and a sidewalk varying in width between 5 and 6 feet along the north side of the roadway. Sidewalks on both sides of the roadway are separated by a 3-foot grass strip. The preferred alternative from Manistee Drive to State Road 79 proposes to repurpose the roadway to provide three 11-foot travel lanes in each direction with a 24-foot raised median and 6-foot bicycle lanes. Outside of the curb and gutter, the preferred alternative would provide a 6-foot wide sidewalk along the north side of the roadway and a 10-foot shared-use path along the south side. The sidewalk is separated from the roadway by a buffer varying in width between 3 and 6 feet and a shared-use path is separated from the roadway by a 4-foot buffer. The preferred alternative will provide continuous sidewalk along the north side of the roadway and a continuous shared-use path along the south side of the roadway for the entire length of the study corridor. Additional multimodal improvements include additional and enhanced existing crosswalks and wider bike lanes from Manistee Drive to State Road 79. The basic principle of access management is to limit the number of conflict points along a roadway by minimizing the number of driveways and restricting certain movements at some intersections. Conflict points are places where two vehicles could cross paths and potentially collide. At a full median opening, there are more conflict points than at a directional median opening. Adjusting a full median opening to a directional median opening reduces conflict points. Reducing conflict points helps decrease the frequency and severity of crashes, thus increasing safety for motorists. Access management modifications are being made throughout the study segment of US 98. The US 98 study corridor currently consists of three access management classifications. From Grand Point Boulevard to east of Phillips Inlet Bridge is classified as Access Class 3. From east of Phillips Inlet Bridge to Front Beach Road is classified as Access Class 7. And from Front Beach Road to State Road 79 is classified as Access Class 5. The preferred alternative recommends the segment between east of Phillips Inlet Bridge to Front Beach Road be changed to Access Class 3. The table on this slide shows the required spacing distances for directional median openings, full median openings, and signal between the various access classifications. To better meet the access management standards designated for the corridor, the preferred alternative recommends median opening changes, including median opening closures at six locations, 26 locations to be modified to directional median openings, and one new median opening to provide U-turn accessibility. The proposed median openings for the preferred alternative are shown on the concept plans on display at the in-person hearing and on the VPU online. This public hearing meets the requirements of this access classification change. A new signalized intersection is proposed at US 98 and Sandal Lane Governor Drive and will include dedicated eastbound and westbound left turn lanes as well as a dedicated westbound right turn lane. The preferred alternative includes improvements to the State Road 79 intersection to improve the operations at the intersection. These improvements include the addition of a northbound left turn lane to provide dual northbound left turn lanes, an additional northbound through lane to provide two northbound through lanes on State Road 79, an additional westbound left turn lane to provide dual westbound right turn lanes, and an additional southbound right turn lane to provide dual southbound right turn lanes. An important element of this PDNE study was to evaluate the potential project impacts and benefits. A wide range of environmental effects were evaluated, including various social, cultural, natural, and physical features and were documented in the environmental document. Engineering and traffic factors were also considered. Impacts to resources are further discussed for the preferred alternative on the following slides. A comparison of the impacts for the preferred alternative are provided in project documents. The total construction cost of the preferred alternative is approximately $314 million. Based on the project evaluation, the FDOT has determined there are no adverse or disproportionate impacts to low-income, minority, or protected population groups by the proposed improvements. The right-of-way acquisition is expected to involve 44 parcels, either partial or full. Two business relocations are anticipated as part of the proposed improvements. The relocations are due to pond sites that have been identified along the corridor that will be reevaluated during the design phase. The sites are documented in the preliminary engineering report available here tonight. One of the unavoidable consequences of a project such as this is the relocation of families or businesses. For this project, we anticipate the relocation of two businesses. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you are required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. The right-of-way specialist who is supervising this program is here tonight and will be happy to answer your questions. Section 106 of the Natural Historic Preservation Act requires agencies to consider the effects of their actions on cultural resources. The study evaluated potential adverse effects to archaeological and architectural resources and determined there are no adverse effects anticipated as a result of the project's improvements. Concurrence from the State Historic Preservation Officer on the cultural resources findings was received in December of 2022. A maritime survey is recommended during the design phase to identify potential submerged cultural resources that may be affected by the proposed bridge replacement. Recreational resources were identified in the study area, including Camp Helen State Park. The Camp Helen North Trail and the Camp Helen Historic District, which functions as an outdoor cultural museum, are also recreational resources located within the park. In accordance with Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act of 1966, the Florida Department of Transportation has identified Camp Helen State Park as a Section 4F property. FDOT is seeking comments from the public concerning the potential effects on the activities, features, and attributes that may result from the widening of US 98 along both sides of the roadway. Camp Helen State Park is located on both sides of the roadway, extending from Grand Point Boulevard to the Phillips Inlet Bridge. No impacts are anticipated to the activities, features, and attributes of Camp Helen State Park. However, FDOT will require 1.3 acres of right-of-way adjacent to US 98 for the roadway widening. The Camp Helen North Trail, which runs underneath the west end of the Phillips Inlet Bridge, will experience temporary impacts during construction, including closure and detour. Once improvements to the Phillips Inlet Bridge are completed, both the vertical clearance of the bridge over the Camp Helen North Trail and the horizontal distance to the point where the bridge separates from the ground will be increased. These improvements will give the trail undercrossing a more open, lighter, and airier atmosphere and improve the aesthetics of the immediate surrounding area. The majority of Camp Helen Historic District is located outside the project's area of potential effects. The potential for adverse effects to the historic district was evaluated by FDOT and it was determined that no historic or contributing resources are located within the project's area of potential effects. Therefore, FDOT determined that the project will have no adverse effects to the Camp Helen Historic District, its contributing resources, or any other historic properties. Following the public comment period and consideration of any input received, the FDOT intends to pursue a de-minimus impact determination on this resource. A de-minimus impact is one that, after taking into account any measures to minimize harm, results in a determination that the project would not adversely affect the activities, features, or attributes of the resource. As part of this determination, FDOT is seeking public feedback on the effects of the proposed action on the activities, features, and attributes of Camp Helen State Park. The improvements proposed as part of this study are anticipated to result in potential impacts to wetlands and floodplains. The preferred alternative is anticipated to impact 7.2 acres of wetlands and 1.4 acres of floodplains within the study area. Additionally, the preferred alternative is located within the buffer zone of a coastal barrier resource on the east end of the Phillips Inlet Bridge. Given the low potential for impacts to the coastal barrier resource, concurrence was received from US Fish and Wildlife Services in October of 2022, confirming the preferred alternative is eligible for exemption. Lake Powell is the largest coastal dune lake in Florida and has Outstanding Florida Waters designation. The preferred alternative proposes two new bridge structures over Lake Powell. Analysis and agency coordination has been conducted to minimize and mitigate potential impacts. The project was evaluated for potential federal and state threatened and endangered species. The project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, the eastern indigo snake and wood stork. There are no impacts anticipated to essential fish habitat. Concurrence from the US Fish and Wildlife Services on the study's natural resources findings was received in January of 2023. Effects to the physical environment were evaluated as a result of the proposed improvements. 118 of the 474 noise receptors analyzed for the study were identified to have the potential to be impacted by the widening of US 98. Three noise barriers are anticipated to be installed as part of the US 98 widening project. They will be subject to engineering feasibility during the design phase. There are 21 potentially contaminated sites adjacent to the project. Potential contamination sites include three high-risk sites, 14 medium-risk sites, and four low-risk sites. The no-build-or-do-nothing alternative is also considered a viable alternative and will remain so for the duration of the study. Under this alternative, no improvements except routine maintenance would be made to US 98 within the project corridor. This evaluation matrix represents the right-of-way acquisition required. This evaluation matrix represents the right-of-way acquisition requirements and the environmental impacts for the no-build and preferred alternatives. The no-build alternative would have no cost associated with design or construction of the project, and there will be no disruption due to congestion. The no-build alternative will result in increased traffic congestion and travel times and does not enhance roadway safety. The Preferred Alternative will address capacity needs and provide acceptable level of service. Under the build alternative, there are minimal potential impacts to social, cultural, natural, and physical resources. The total preliminary cost of the project, including design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction phases is approximately $405.9 million. Thank you. This concludes the formal presentation. We will now begin the public comment period of the public hearing. The next step is to incorporate input from this public hearing into our decision-making process. Persons wishing to make a statement or present views regarding this project will now have an opportunity to do so. There are multiple ways to provide your comments, written or verbally. If you do not wish to speak at the microphone, you may provide your comments in writing. Every comment method carries equal weight.
We will now call upon in-person participants who have requested to speak. If you would like to speak and have not yet completed and turned in a speaker card, please raise your hand. As I call your number, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address before making your comment. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Will Speaker Number One please come to the microphone?
Thank you. My name is Lee Harris. My address down here is 24400 Panama City Beach Parkway. I'm one of the board members for Pirate's Cove Inlet. We're a community of sixty-two units. We're the last neighborhood community on your right, right before you go over the Phillips Inlet Bridge. We have some of our other owners here tonight. If we have some other owners and I haven't met you yet, I'd like to meet you before I leave. I got most of my questions and concerns answered during the 5:30 session, but I'd just like to just kind of reiterate and remind that on our end, at that end of 98, right before you go over the bridge, you've got Caroline, you've got our community, you've got a new community that's going in right next to us that I believe is going to have like 289 units and retail space with restaurants and everything. So as busy as that section of 98 is now, it's going to get a lot busier. So we just hope that anything that you can do during the continuing design phase, planning phase, and everything takes into account that, you know, we're going to have, even with extra lanes, it's going to even get more congested. And then if we have pedestrians coming from Caroline over across to our side to go to the restaurants and the shops and everything in the new development, anything you can do to help us, you know, slow the traffic down. We had one of our owners had a serious injury. She was trying to slow down to make a right turn into Pirate's Cove, and somebody was coming up behind her at a high rate of speed, wasn't paying attention, and slammed into her rear end and caused her some significant long-term health issues. So we appreciate adding the lane and doing everything you can in that regard. And but like I said, we just ask that everyone please remember during the planning process, whatever you can do to help us out with, you know, getting the traffic slowed down, making it more pedestrian-friendly, and things of that nature, we certainly would appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Will Speaker Number Two?
Andy Gothard, 326 Oleander. I think you have a good plan. I went down to GIS Bay County today, and on the south side of 98, from 79 to Caroline Beach, I asked them to tell me how many dwelling units we had in that area. Nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dwelling units south of Back Beach Road. And my concern has to do with going westbound and turning towards the beach. And I would dare say that somewhere in the neighborhood, there's probably four to five thousand left-hand turns made on that road every day, based on these numbers. And it looks like some of us are going to lose our westbound access to our property. I paid a lot of money for that parcel, and I'm losing, according to your map, that westbound access. It would have to go further down, further west, and make a U-turn to come back to my commercial property. And I did, it is a commercial piece of property. So I'm very concerned about that. And all the other owners that are going to lose their westbound access to commercial property on the south side of the road. And I want to just get on the record, on eastbound, I've had an accident there at Oleander. It's a high-traveled, high-access road. It made your map on your flyer. I had, we've had two killed that I know, and I've had two accidents, both of which hit my home 150 feet off the right-of-way. So we do have a speed problem. We do have a traffic problem. And for $45 million a mile, I hope we get it cured. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Will Speaker Number Three?
Jack Willis, 23223 Front Beach Road, Unit A722, Pinnacle Port. I haven't met or talked to any of the two previous speakers, but it's interesting how our comments and our concerns are so much alike in there. I hear about looking at all this, and when we look at the turn lane, this from east to west, turn lane, that from west to north, north, south. I was absent that day, obviously, when they taught me how to follow all that. I appreciate what the Florida Department of Transportation is doing. I understand and realize that your mission is to increase the tempo and also take care of the safety aspect of it. I get it. And I applaud you for that. And so much of the work that you do in our great state is just super in there. Let me ask you or encourage you to come to the red light at Wells Fargo and CVS going west on your left. And as the gentleman said just a minute ago from Pirate's Cove, when you go down there within 250 yards, there's two left-hand turns. And from 4:30 in the afternoon until about 6:30, 6:00 to 6:30 in the afternoon, we cannot hardly get across the two lanes right now. And someone, in their wisdom, decided that they would plant bushes in between the four lanes in there. And folk will tell you, if you're there turning left, you have to be in a herd. The folk coming across, going east when they cross Phillips Inlet Bridge, and they see the light, they want to get there, they want to get through the light there where Front Beach and 98 come together before it turns red. And sometimes they're wide open, and that is verified by the fact that our state patrol probably make a number of them pay their salaries by working the east side of the bridge over there. When we talk about the endangered species, I'm concerned about human beings in there. There is really a safety issue in there. And when we add another lane going east and west, I don't know how you're going to address that safety issue in there, but I'm sure that you will in there, and hope that you will do that, as well as when you add the multi-traffic lane in there, as well as also the bicycle, the bike lane and what have you. It's really a challenge that I think you have, if you're concerned. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to do this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Will Speaker Number Four?
Good evening. I'm Bob Reed, and I'm also an owner and full-time resident at Pinnacle Port at 23223 Front Beach Road, and also happen to be the neighbor to the speaker who just was up here, Jack Willis. So don't want to repeat constantly what things have been said, but I do have some concerns that I consider safety concerns in our particular area. And that involves from the bridge at Phillips Inlet up to where Front Beach and Panama City Parkway come together. The entrance to Pinnacle Port is an issue, as Jack had pointed out earlier. And basically, I've broken it down into what I think are probably four safety concerns. One is the actual crossing, the additional lane of traffic in either direction. The vegetation that exists now between the bridge and our entrance at Pinnacle Port. The increase to local, both foot and automobile traffic due to the upcoming developments that are occurring on that northwest corner of the intersection of Front Beach Road and Panama City Beach Parkway. And the four safety concern is, and I mentioned in the presentation, you have what are called conflict points at intersections. And our intersection there is one of those conflict points because we have the entrance to Pirate's Cove, the entrance to Pinnacle Port and Caroline Beach. Also, at that entrance is the access point for public access to the beach. There's actually a sign there at our entrance. All of those things contribute to a potential problem and then concern. Have some possible solutions, or at least things to think about in terms of the changes. One of those, there is a flashing light that is just to the east of our entrance. And it's obscured a little bit by some of the palm trees that are nearby. But I would suggest that if possible, that that flashing light, that warning light, be moved more westbound, so it occurs before our entrance, so that people coming off the bridge, they're coming around a curve, and that flashing light at least gives a little bit of a warning. It would be nice to have an actual traffic light there, but I understand there are some issues with trying to put a traffic light that close to another one. The other thing is with the vegetation. And I know the number of our owners where we live have kind of spoken to people, and I don't know who specifically, about getting the vegetation cut to a lower level because of that curve there at the eastbound side of the bridge. It's very difficult for someone turning into our property entrance to see those, especially with motorcycles. The visibility is difficult. And at dusk, that presents even additional problem. And the new development that exists or that is coming to the area that's on that northwest corner of the intersection is going to increase a lot of foot traffic. And there may be need for, and I don't know what the term is, but I think you have different levels of access when you have crossings for the public that maybe that be increased. And since the intersection there is one that is deemed a conflict point, I would ask that there be something done to, you know, to change that, to reduce the conflict of all the different entities trying to cross at that point. Again, I do appreciate everything that FDOT is doing and for helping us to improve the traffic flow because traffic does become a big issue in this area, especially in the summertime. But I do appreciate all the concerns and the ability to be able to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And Speaker Number Five?
Hi, my name is Molly Allen. I live at 16211 East Low Water Drive, so on the other side of Highway 79, from all the way over that way. Today, I'm here because I have a concern regarding any of the coastal dune lakes, which could be within this project's scope. I realize that I might not receive an immediate answer today, but I would like to have an answer forwarded to me or sent to me. I know it's a difficult question, so I don't expect an immediate answer, I guess is where I'm going with that. It's an important question. So my question is, will stormwater runoff resulting from this project, either directly or indirectly, be routed to or drained into any of the lakes or the fresh water that ultimately makes it into the Gulf of Mexico? Basically, where do the curb and gutters flow and end up? Our freshwater coastal dune lakes are the first stopover for migratory animals that come all the way from South America, where their very first stop to get a little bit of fresh water. So I'm very concerned about microplastics, about grease, about oil. I understand there are some types of mechanics that will pull large debris out, but I'm more concerned about that fine debris that we don't see. I come from Low Water Lake, which, as everyone knows, is part of the large outfall project that is about to occur. We are trying to slow down a little bit and understand how these types of projects, these large projects, will cause turbidity and low water quality in our beautiful and natural resources. So my question, I guess the second question, is what will the DOT be doing and what measures will be taken to protect Panama City Beach freshwater resources? This map doesn't show it on this side. It's kind of darkened in. But over on the FDOT maps over here, you can see all the little key lakes or beach lakes. There's Twin Lakes and Jamaica Lakes, just to name a few. And my concern is that they will be the basin for stormwater runoff. So thank you for letting me address that today.
Thank you for your comment. That was the last of the speaker cards. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If so, raise your hand, and we'll get you a speaker card. Okay? If that's all, this will conclude our in-person comment. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to our online moderator, Jennifer Brownfield, who I'll now call upon. And she'll call our online participants who requested to speak at registration.
Thank you, Tori. For those of you wishing to offer public comments virtually, I will call your name, then unmute you. Please make sure to also unmute your microphone on your end using the GoToWebinar control panel, as shown on this slide. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address before making your comment. And as a reminder, if you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And before you speak, make sure you're not self-muted, which you can undo by clicking on the microphone icon in the control panel. If you did not ask to speak when you registered for the hearing, but you would like to do so now, please raise your hand using that feature. And I will call on you once I've heard from those who've previously registered to speak. The first person requesting to make a public comment is Jamie Cox. I'm unmuting you now. Please unmute. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address, then share your comments with us.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jamie Cox, and my address is 21400 Marlin Avenue. And the couple of concerns my husband and I have is that my property, which is a new home that was built just over a year ago, is at the corner of Marlin and 98. We're probably one of the closest homes located to Highway 98. And the one thing that we've noticed on the proposed map and the changes was the right-of-way shows to go through my backyard and my pool, which currently exists because the map does not actually show my house. It just shows a dirt lot. So we were concerned about like how close the additional lanes were going to be to our home, the sidewalk, all that proposed, because we already have a fence, you know, that was approved by the county, and we're within our property lines, and how that's going to affect us, as well as the inability from what the map is showing for anybody within our area to make a left onto Highway 98 from our area, whether it be Marlin, Kelly, or wherever. It looks like I'd have to go all the way down to the intersection where Windexian Publix is if I want to make a left on the Highway 98. And then, of course, the road noise, it's loud as it is now. And, you know, luckily, our eight-foot fence kind of helps that a little bit, and we have a pool. But outside of that, you add an additional lane, additional traffic, and the, you know, the speed limit's 55 miles an hour. I'm wondering what the proposal is to help with the road noise that's, you know, potential to affect us.
Okay, thank you so much for your comments, Jamie. That is all of the folks who registered ahead of time to provide comment. Is anyone else joining us online who did not pre-register to make comments virtually who would now like to provide a comment? If so, please use the raise your hand function, and I will call on you. Okay, I do not see any additional participants who raised their hands to provide additional comments. So that is all of the folks who registered ahead of time, and no one has raised their hand to comment. So this concludes the virtual public comments. I'm going to hand it back to you, Tori.
Thank you, Jennifer. This concludes the public comment period. I would like to thank everyone for taking the time to share your comments concerning the US 98 PD&E study. You may continue to submit your written comments after tonight's public hearing, but they must be postmarked or emailed by May 19, 2023, to become part of the official public hearing record. Written comments can be mailed or emailed to me, the FDOT project manager. My contact information is shown on the slide and on the handout you receive tonight. You may also visit our project website at www.northwestfloridaroads.com to further view documents and submit comments. The exact transcript of this hearing's oral proceedings, together with all written material received as part of the hearing record and all studies, displays, and informational material provided at the hearing will be made a part of the project's decision-making process and will be for public review upon request. Thank you for attending the public hearing and providing your input on this project. I hereby officially close the public hearing for the US 98 PD&E study from west of the Phillips Inlet Bridge to State Road 79 in Bay County at 6:55 PM. Have a good evening, and please drive safely.